Is voting if you really support the labor force. I appeal to you to support lengthening P L to seven days, members. Please do not shout from your seats, Mister Jonathan Ho. Chairman, if the Hong Kong public have been listening to the non-establishment camp, they would be confused. Well, some members said that they would have enjoyed two periods of P L. I don't know how that was possible unless his wife could have a baby every six months. Doctor Helena Wong was here when the secretary spoke, and the secretary said that if any amendment would be passed, the bill will have to be withdrawn because it would have to be discussed again by the L A B. So do we want to have the original amendment which would lengthen P L to five days? Or should we want the status quo, that is three days? Doctor Helena Wong said it doesn't matter if there are three days now because our aim is seven days, we don't mind settling for three days. Sorry, Doctor Wong, the F T U is a very pragmatic organization. We like to pocket it as soon as possible, I said so yesterday. Members were being provocative, challenging us why we do not accept seven days. I already said we want the labor force to benefit right away. Some members said that ours would be a continual fight. Well, yes, as long as there are employers and employees, the battle will go on so that there will be improvements to labor welfare. But the F T U will continue to strive. Maybe this is different from democracy that Doctor Wong is striving for. But we want to continue to strive and then we can have something to pocket from time to time. We hope today we can carry the bill so we have five days and we'll ask the administration to promise when we can have seven days or even more. This is what the F T U has been asking. Well, you have strived for democracy all these years. Apart from that time when the Democratic Party visited the liaison office, what else have you done? We want real benefits instead of just paying deep lip service like you are doing. You may put up a very attractive front to say that you strive for the benefit of the people, but we are more pragmatic, we are not just religious. And also, this is not the monopoly of the F T U. Anyone in society can strive for labor rights, that is why we have different political parties. But then, the L A B is necessary so that we can have employer and employee representatives sitting down together. Well, of course, the F T U would also talk to employers. But I'd like to ask the Democratic Party, like Doctor Helena Wong. You said all this time you strived for P L, but did you talk to just one employer to tell him that he should give seven days P L? Did you do anything like that? Well, I don't think you had. But you would have had a chance to see employers at the anniversary dinner of the D P, well Henderson and many other big enterprises and also S M Es were there celebrating your anniversary with you. Did you talk to any one of them? And did you succeed in making them sign any agreement to say that they would give seven days P L? You did not, but the F T U did so. And we did our job, you said it is not enough. And then you did not do anything. And then when we had achieved something, you would say that we did not do enough. So it's not a matter of pressing the button, but whether we are achieving anything for the labor force. And also, we had a universal or constitutional reform package, but you did not want it. And for you, striving for democracy is an everlasting task. Therefore, the F T U is the organization that can secure benefits for the labor force. And our principle is to allow the labor force to enjoy five days P L first. If you say the L A B is not open and transparent, well, then look for one mechanism or a method so that you can get all the employers together. We can go along with you and we will assist you if you can do something like that because it will benefit the labor force. Just now, people said it was an agreement reached behind closed door and the entire mechanism should not exist. I think apart from the F T U, only Mister Leng Yilong has any experience in labor negotiations. And he will know that you can't have everybody at the table of negotiation to get any results. This is a matter of operation. But if you call this an undemocratic mechanism, I like to say that at the recent election of L A B, now I'm not doing any commercial here. Well, actually, democratic members participated in the election. One was the assistant of Miss Claudia Mo and also assistants of other democratic politicians. If you say that the structure is unfair, then why did they take part in the election of that mechanism? I don't see how you were exposing the mechanism and its weaknesses. They actually wanted to be included in the mechanism by taking part in the election. So why are you taking part in the election while you criticize the mechanism? So it's like a woman who wants to stay married all the time. But I'm not talking about you. We have four hundred and thirty thousand members and we represent them. We have two hundred member unions from different sectors. And we are fighting for labor rights at different levels. We hope we can achieve something quickly. At second reading, I said that eighty-five percent of our member unions said that we should support five days today and then we'll continue to fight for seven days. If the public have heard Doctor Wong and other democratic members say they support seven days, but if you support their amendments, in the end, the public will end up with just three days. I don't think this is what the labor force wants. They want some improvements, quick. This is our negotiation strategy all these years. We want gradual improvements. Doctor Helena Wong, I hope you will not talk nonsense anymore. Let us complete the discussion of this P L and carry the bill.
Mister Felix Chong, thank you, Chairman. This is the committee stage and the start. I heard some members said that the business sector was using cost as a pretext not to support the proposal and the business sector that they were in, they would be in trouble if a few people do not come for duty for a few days. Well, in this, in this, in the second reading debate, the Liberal Party said we support increasing P L from three to five days. And Mister Peter Shu that a survey results show that they support increasing P L from three to five days. And even Mister Tommy John supported that proposal. And in the latest media reports that I watched upstairs, they were saying that three of us objected to the proposal. Now, if the average citizen was following the debate, then they would think that the business sector is not humanistic, is very unreasonable. I must reiterate that we support increasing P L from three days to five days. This morning, I also said that seven days is not a big deal either. We won't be paying a lot, the company will not collapse. Now, the crux of the matter is that whether you are really asking for seven days. But then some other members will grant you seven days, would ask for two weeks. So if you are given seven days, will you, will you then be asking for two weeks next? This is, this doesn't mean a substantial increase in the cost. I think they are making incessant requests, that's the gist of the problem. Now, if you say that we give you seven days and two weeks and the matter will be put to an end, then that's okay. Now, the gov, if the government is to pay it, the cost will be just one hundred million dollars. So it's not a big deal either. The secretary said that the hundred million dollars is not a big problem, but the administrative cost can be substantial. So please give, show us the sums, tell us whether the government can't afford it. So the impression is that the business sector will object to every kind of labor right improvement measure. But I must clarify, it has to do with the responsibility. While many employers are giving P L even without the legislative requirement, will they be seeing a substantial rise in cost? No. Now, I must also say something about the L A B too. Some members were saying that how come that the representation of employers and employees is the same in the L A B? We've got three million workers and then we've got some three hundred thousand S M Es. So one tenth, so it's always the employees who outnumber the employers. And then if you say we just go by the majority vote, then Hong Kong will no longer be a capitalist society, but rather a socialist society. Or even a communist society going, if we accede to your request. You try to outnumber us. And of course, the workers will be making all sorts of requests and employers will be fewer than you. So if we go by the ratio you propose, there is no way that we can talk. So at the L A B, we have the same number of employers and employees representatives, and they have a discussion, then that's what I call good negotiation, a real way to resolve problems. There are, the society is asking, is raising a lot of other requests. Does it mean that every request will be acceded to? No, we need to have negotiations to get things done. You always said that workers are in the majority and you, we, we should go by the majority rule. Then Hong Kong will be doomed if we go down your route. Now, some members from the labor sector said that the government is good towards the business sector. I would tell you today that the government is good or biased towards the labor sector. There is a host of labor legislation to be rolled out. And the government will be dishing out thirty billion dollars to the business sector to deal with the offsetting mechanism. So the money doesn't go to the business sector, it goes to the employees. I would, I would even say that, well, don't give us thirty billion dollars, we don't need it. Are you happy then, Mister Wu Chi Wei, Chairman? I would like to speak on Doctor Helena Wong's C S A. Well, I don't think the other C S As will be passed at all, no way that can be done. But the gist of the Doctor Helena Wong's C S A is that she accepts the L A B's decision. So if we endorse Doctor Wong's C S A, we would be agreeing to the L A B's proposal. And then, one year later, then the P L, the P L will be increased to seven days. As I spoke last time and as pointed out by some business representatives here on the issue of labor rights, there are different kinds of employers. Some have better capability, some are startups, some are new employers, and some employers may run into difficulties in their operations. So I think that if we reached a consensus in L A B, then I think the, that means that this is a striking, a balance being struck there. And this proposal is accepted by the business sector. But the democratic camp and the labor sector have been proposing or advocating for seven days of P L. We're talking about a difference of two days, what does it mean? So we talk about the funding source. And Doctor Helena Wong's C S A doesn't say specifically, say if we have an extra two days after one year, how it will be funded. Maybe it would be funded by the government or maybe a new consensus can be reached between the employers and employees side. So that provides a good timetable for the government. And it will facilitate the government's dealing with the divergent views, this sort of, and in the dealing with the hot button issues. But then the government's approach is very strange. And at the outset, it said that we couldn't discuss any C S As. And if C S As are passed, then the proposal has to be referred back to the L A B for further discussion. Is this the best approach to improve the relationship between the legislature and executive and the current term government? Different approaches have been used, including, say, canceling the offsetting mechanism of M P F, increasing M L from ten weeks to, for fourteen weeks to improve labor rights. And the secretary just now said that you are mindful about the affordability of the S M Es and micro enterprises. And well, if that is the case, maybe the government can render support and provide resources to the S M Es and micro enterprises. I think in terms of managing public finances, this should be taken on board. We should gather or collect tax from the affordable and then try to fund those who have to, who are not, who cannot afford certain measures. So unless the secretary told me that, well, two days is unreasonable, extra resources for that is unreasonable, that is subject to further discussion and debate. But then, you are trying to use the L A B's discussion as a pretext for not doing enough. And then, on the C S As, the government or Mister Law, you can decide on the commencement date. And Doctor Wong's C S A is asking you to implement five day P L as soon as possible. And then after one year, you can, you should come back and consider an extra two days. Now, if the government believes further improvement should be made, then it should rightly be referred back to the L A B for further discussion. This is a very good way to break out of the stalemate and a good way to resolve the divergent views. It should not be the case that the government should just be sitting on the fans and not doing anything. We are having this debate at the council and different options are being proposed. And the government should consider how the way forward should be. Now, if you say that as long as the C S As are passed and you would just withdraw the bill, you would not be able to ease the tension between the legislature and executive in doing that. Let me reiterate. Well, a lot of members have referred to respecting the L A B, the L A B's decision of have, of on five P L days. And Doctor Wong's C S As could help us sort of show respect to the L A B as what the F T U said that you want to strive for seven P L days. If this is discussed at the L A B, maybe we will be seeing a lot of resistance from the business sector. Maybe the government should then pay, should consider paying for the extra two days proposed by the labor sector. Then we can sort of get out of this predicament and because we will be able to respect the L A B and at the same time, show respect to the consensus reached within the Legislative Council. The Mister Law or the secretary should respond to my suggestion. And, well, think carefully about what I said. Is it the case that everything is as cast in stone on the part of the government? I appeal the labor's representatives here to consider pressurizing the government to shoulder more. So I appeal to you to carefully consider Doctor Wong's C S A because her C S A can respect the L A B's decision and at the same time, show that the council does have its own autonomy to decide on its own stance towards a government proposal. Mister Lu Chong Hong, Michael Lu. Thank you, Chairman. Let me set this upfront. I won't oppose and or support members' C S As. You understand that F T U has been fighting for seven days of P L all the time. So labor rights can always get better and Hong Kong workers' rights are very backward. And people have shared data, academic views and so on. And we are talking about all the benefits of P L days. This is a common knowledge or common sense and also a consensus within the community. But why I'm supporting the government's proposal for two reasons. First, because we have to respect the L A B's decision. In a minute, I will be elaborating on that. And then these are, C S As are not genuine choices. This, this is no way out. Let me make some response on the tech, on the technical side.
The amendments moved by Doctor Helena Wong and the one originally moved by Hawkeye Ming and now taken over by Mister Wang Ting Guang. But they are different, the two amendments are different. Doctor Wong wants to have, to set a time for a review and then the matter will be taken back to the L A B for discussion. But the Doctor Helena Wong's amendment would involve automatically increasing P L to seven days. But this amendment would undermine the mutual trust in the L A B between the employers' representatives and employees' representative. We think, we don't think this is a good solution. The government favors the business sector. They give, when they give a gift, they, they give something to the business sector. It's a packet, a well-packaged big puzzle. But when it's time for the labor sector to get something, it's always a small one, a small gift. But we should end up getting nothing for the sake of trying to get something more. The pandem, pandems are saying that the secretary, well, it's just posing threats which may or may not be carried out. But the secretary has made it very clear that is the reality. The bill will be withdrawn in certain cases. So in reality, there's a choice between three days of P L or five days of P L and nothing else. Members could have asked for a better proposal, but they, they did nothing until it's time for the bills committee to come to a view. Are they trying to persuade the government to change his, his idea? Or are they just trying to extract some political mileage out of it? That in this regard, I admire the, the honesty of Mister Doctor Chang Chung Tai that he would vote against the bill if the amendments are not accepted. Other members want to get the moral high ground, but they also want to get something, get some results. So they want both, they don't want to be shown that they have not tried to work hard. So it is a kind of no-cost exercise to extract some brownie points. They know that we would not support the amendments and then the bill would be supported and passed. So they, they end up getting the credit. And Mister Chu Hui takes as the F T U is acting in a so contradictory ways. And then we are saying that there are many conflicts and, and yet we have to look at the reality. We would promote changes if this, unless the system is needed objectively. The voice of employee, employees is weaker. That's why we need the platform in the form of the L A B because we need to involve, involve all the major chambers of commerce and employers' representatives. Mister Chu says we are moving at a snail, at a snail's pace. But if, if we don't have a forum to involve the employers' representative, we will not be moving at all, we won't be moving at a snail's pace. And he said that the C E is, is subject to the system under the election committee. Well, I agree. But which political camp vetoed the twenty fifteen constitutional reform package? The opposition camp, the constitutional development package back in twenty fifteen was vetoed. The biggest beneficiary is the business sector. And the major victim is the, is the labor sector. Can F T U act out of free will? Well, we are an organization that values democracy and negotiation. We are not doing things for our own political gains or for the purpose of of holding on to the moral high ground. Well, this may be an easy way out, but the F T U never wants to do that. We have a history of seventy-seven years. We will do consultation and we don't just cover F T U unions. According to Mister Hawkeye Ming, eighty-five percent of the union surveys think that we should support the government's proposal to To uh, to increase P L from three to five days. And we should continue to strive for P L to, to be increased to seven days. We surveyed. All registered trade unions. Through this three plus six platform, three. Legal members representing the labor sector and the six labor's, labor representatives. So we survey our unions affiliated with L F L U or the pandemics. Or the uh C T U. So our decision is based on this survey finding. Well, voting in favor of all the C S A's is, is easy. It, we, it will win us a, a prize, but we should not use this. We should not put up a show which may affect the labor interest. Or as Mister Chu Hui take I said, well, let's uh. Let's, uh, let's wager this with the government. But this is a ve- this is very important, we, we are no gambler. Chairman. We cannot do something which we know would end up in failure. We should not bang our head against the wall and everyone uh loses. I, I, I would like to play football. Of course, if you are a spectator, you want to see soccer play ver- you know, at a very quick pace. And there are many goals. And now this, the government has set up an offside trap, openings. Well, op- ops- offside means that if the, if the forward player is, goes beyond the defense player. Then uh, even he strikes a goal, it won't count. Uh, the referee would overrule uh the goal. So it's just like the government's stance to draw the bill if what we propose exceeds their baseline. And we should not just have forwards, forward players. And we'd gamble with the negotiation platform and. Wouldn't, wouldn't it mean that in the future, uh, it would be even more difficult to have negotiations and, and progress? If we undermine this negotiation mechanism, who, 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 who would be the happiest? I think it will be those who said that one day of P L is uh, or is already excessive, is, is too much. Mister Chan Ham Pan, well, we are now talking about P L and the amendments. Uh, which is, which are about increasing P L from five days to seven days. Well, I was alarmed by Mister Hau Kai Ming. He said, uh, uh, Mister Ho says, says Doctor Helena Wong is a widow who can no longer remain single. Well. He's a very conservative counselor. He knows that if we pass the amendment and then the bill will be withdrawn and we end up with nothing. But they know. Uh, Doctor Helena Wong knows that the pro-establishment members would certainly as. Uh, support the bill. And Doctor Wong is being conservative by asking just two more days. Why don't you ask ten more days and, and, and claim that you have spoken out for, for workers? And you know very well that the bill will be supported by us and it would be passed, whether the amendments are, are passed or not. It's a diff- it's not easy for, for us to reach this stage of, of having a bill. It would involve negotiation at, in, at the L A B. And we will have to take care of the interests of both the employer's side and the employee's side. It's that it's difficult to have successful negotiation uh in the L A B. Because uh, L A B is, is not an effective mechanism. So then how come we, we, we now have P L? We, we didn't have it in the past. Well, we have been asking for uh, a, a P L entitlement of seven days. And we know that things are moving slowly. But you know that when your amendments are passed, the bill will be withdrawn. You, you, you were told to be the, in no uncertain terms. That if it is, the amendments are passed, the matter will be referred back to the L A B. And that would be another waiting period of a few years. I have an assistant who is about to deliver a baby. Uh, she's very anxious to know whether her, her husband would be given two more days of P L. So if the amendments are passed, we have to wait before. Before um the next round of improvement. Doctor Wong knows that um, that this, this would be the case. He, she would be able to claim that she had tried to fight for more, more labor rights. Better bit, labor rights for the, for employees. But she wouldn't say that uh. The end result would be that of P L will remain three days. She's a very conservative person in my view. Members across the political spectrum uh want to. See the P L entitlement improve. We respect the mechanism, but we want you to review the mechanism to expedite things. For example, as Mister Hau Kai Ming has suggested, you should, perhaps you should review the uh. The entitlement in a year. But unfortunately, his amendment was disallowed. Will the government to look into this? And we hope that very quick, quickly we can see improvement to P L. Uh, the government is now proposing to increase maternity leave to fourteen weeks. Uh, many organizations are not yet in the, in a position to offer this. This new entitlement, not even public sector organizations. After this period is passed, I hope the government would disseminate the information to different organizations quickly. So that uh, people will start immediately to benefit from this new P L entitlement. Unlike the M L improvement. Many mothers to be are still waiting to get a notification, waiting for the information. As regards whether they will get fourteen weeks of M L or not, so I speak.
This Alice Mac, Chairman, I will speak briefly. Just like to say why the M, F T U cannot support the amendments. As my colleague said, Mister Jonathan Ho and Mister Michael Lu have said very clearly. We have a well-established and time-honored mechanism of the L A B. What is more important? We have consulted the labor sector, we have consulted unions. We respect the consensus of the labor force, that is why we have made this decision. We of course know that the council is a place for political struggle. I wouldn't say that there should be no politics in the council. In fact, everything is politicized. Some people may want to attack the L A B, but in fact, members of the L A B are elected. There are six employee representatives and there is only one from the F T U. Yet, we have been smeared to as if we call the shots at L A B. And it is kind of closed-door politics. This is very frustrating. As I said. Labor policies and livelihood issues come to this council, but then they are turned into tools for confrontation. And the aim is to attack the pro-establishment camp so that the other side can achieve their political aim. We are not foolish in voting, we know how we should vote and we know how they are going to attack us. We have prepared for that. But Mister Ted Ho said we should have more guts, but frankly, I wouldn't have his guts. What he had done, uh, would could not be done by me. We, we were prepared for what the other camp would say, but we insist on respecting the consensus of the labor sector. It was a difficult decision, but then we are committed, as legislators, we are committed. We have prepared for what the other camp would say, that it was so hard on the year that they could be so mean. But we have to tell society and the labor force that we follow their consensus. It's a difficult decision. Today, we will support the amendment of the government. But together with the unions of the different sectors, we'll continue to try to secure seven days or even more. Mister Shu Kafai?
Thank you, Chairman. In the last round. After I spoke, my party colleague Mister Ho Wang sent me a paragraph and he asked me to read it out. He said that labor issues should not be a source of confrontation in modern society. There should be mutual benefit and mutual accommodation and the administration should not stand on the side of either party. But it seems the present administration is inclined towards the populist camp. Populist members are helping to blow this up. And they compare labor laws of different places. But then they are quoting things out of the context and they are playing to the gallery. Because they want to have more support from their voters, they want public opinion to be on their side. But they have not given any thought to affordability competitiveness. Many welfare countries are facing the risk of bankruptcy. And, and there is only one reason, and that is populism. Recently, a lot of labor laws were passed and, and there are, uh, in, they are inclined towards the labor sector. Like uh, S M W and maternity leave, et cetera. Now, those are the views of one of my party members. In the last round, Chairman, I talked about the retail and wholesale sector. And I said that the survey showed that my constituency would support five days in the main. But some also supported even zero days and three days. I would object to the proposal to lengthen it to seven days. I heard many members say that it's just a matter of two days. Fathers and mothers would be busy feeding the baby and changing diapers. And we should help them, but then I can also counter, ask, okay, there will be seven days. What about the eighth day? Who would be feeding the baby? Who would be changing diapers? So it's not a matter of seven days or not. The administration has to think about the entire plan to encourage people to have babies. Say, how can you help mothers to take care of the baby so that they are reassured and, and they can go to work? A friend from South Korea told me that they have such a good economy because people work very hard. They have maximum working hours, but they may um lock out. But then they stealthily go back to work in the night. And that is why you know South Korea is developing so fast in the past few years. So who takes care of the babies? They told us that actually childcare services would run to ten P M. Young children can sleep, play, do homework and eat in the childcare homes. We don't have the manpower to do this in Hong Kong and we don't have childcare services in the districts. There is no place to do this. And you should think about this, you have stopped the running of many schools and there are many vacant school buildings. Why don't you turn them into childcare centers? So parents can have the confidence to place the children there until they leave work for the day. This is one real, very real policy that you can help parents so they are happy to have babies. Now, of course, if there is a longer leave, then it goes towards um taking better care of families. But as I said in the last round, Hong Kong's competitiveness matters. Hong Kong's economic situation is not that good. How can we enhance our competitiveness? We cannot allow costs to continue to climb, I said so in the last round. In the process of this debate, I heard from non-establishment members say that Hong Kong is very backward. Uh, there are sixteen weeks of P L in Taiwan, two weeks in Singapore. Well, I will just repeat what I said. I don't know whether they have read the papers thoroughly or that they could not express themselves. I have said that we should tell the entire story. In these countries, the employers do not have to pay for P L. They are paid by the government or social insurance. If they want to make a comparison, then you should compare Hong Kong with other places where the employers are also responsible. The Legco actually issued a report after interviewing over a hundred countries. Of course, we don't want to compare with Africa. Maybe we can compare ourselves with five neighboring cities, Singapore, South Korea, um, Japan, et cetera. In Japan. There is no P L. Of course, the members won't like to mention it. I mentioned Singapore and South Korea and Taiwan. Very often, P L is not paid for by employers. And if they are paid for by employers, they would limit it to five days. And if you ask us to lengthen it to seven days, then we would be worse off in competitiveness. And the most important point is not a matter of two days. If you ask me whether I know the birth rate in Hong Kong is low, yes, I know, Chairman. And Hong Kong people don't tend to have a lot of children. The problem is not just two days. The question is, the administration is rolling out a whole list of labor welfare issues. Abolishing the um offsetting mechanism, you are increasing the S M W. You want to go for standard working hours and you are talking about increasing the labor holidays to seventeen days. And then also collective bargaining, et cetera. So there is a, a whole checklist. Why are we not worried? And if everything is done, that would affect our competitiveness. I think members must look at the pros and cons of all the issues taken together so the Hong Kong public know what is happening. Don't just say you want to fight for better wages and welfare for the labor sector. I would say if Hong Kong people can make more money, they have more holidays. Of course, that is very good. But how can we allow our economy to continue to develop instead of, of doing like European countries where there is a lot of welfare? And in the end, they go bankrupt. That is not the way to work for the long-term well-being of Hong Kong. Mister Andrew Wen. Asked about my questionnaire survey, I like to clarify and, and in fact, I said very clearly. That uh, most people supported five days and then some three days, seven days and then zero days. Uh, Mister Onok Hin and another member mentioned. Uh, Mister Onok Hin actually talked about the Latte Corporation who gi- give um. A month of P L, even if the statutory requirement is five days. And other members have said that multinational corporations give a lot of P L. I know that and I, I agree that's the case. But you must understand, they are mega multinational corporations. As I said in the last round, if you roll out policies that do not benefit the businesses. The S M Es would be the most affected, but then the large corporations would not be affected at all. Is it our position that we want to kill off all S M Es and only allow large corporations to stay? Do you want everybody to be a worker instead of having his own business? I think we should give this some serious thought. It seems now. The battleground is between the non-establishment camp on one side and D A B and F T U on the other side. Um, criticizing the D A B and F T U for not supporting seven days. I heard from the D A B and F T U what the views are and I'd like to say that in many issues, the L P is closer to the D A B and F T U in many e- in relation to many issues. Some people also say that we are in the pro-establishment camp. Why is that so? Actually, we should look for mutual benefits when we talk about labor issues. This time around, if the administration allows the amendments to be passed, that is um it will be lengthened to seven days, but no, that is not the case. And in the end, we would only be stuck with three days. I understand some other members are more pragmatic. They would like to secure two more days for the labor sector first and then we can have gradual progress. And I don't think that's a bad thing. King Solomon talked about two women fighting for the same baby and in the end, the real mother um preferred to give up the baby so that the other woman can have the baby because the real mother cares for the baby. I believe the D A B and the F T U are in the same uh category, they really want to get more benefit for the labor sector. Other people are just playing to the gallery, they are fighting for the impossible. And then they use that as a ground to point fingers at other people. This is not for the good of Hong Kong. I don't want us to go down the route of populism. Hong Kong people have always been wise. We have been working for the improvement of the economy. If we unrealistically push for more welfare, Hong Kong will not benefit. Just look at our ranking in the latest competitiveness report. Let us be pragmatic. The Liberal Party will support the extension from three days to five. I'd like to reiterate, whether it is three to five or five to seven, the two days itself is not an important matter. But more importantly, the administration, you must listen to us. We just can't afford it if you are rolling out so many labor policies in a row and especially the abolition of the offsetting mech- mechanism. Many S M Es are worried that they might collapse. Please think about that more carefully first. Madam Deputy, so I speak. Mister Kwai Wei Keng. Thank you, Madam Deputy. Mister Shiu Kafai is in the Legco for the first time, but he remember last time, in the last term, when debating the three-day P L with Mister Ray Chan, uh we quoted the King Solomon example and I thank him for remembering that. Now, who really cares about this? Only those who really want something to be accomplished would do a good job. Other people are just making a gesture and they are shouting for more so that they would receive more attention and they are the unreal mother in the King Solomon fable.
Madam Deputy, the opposition camp at the outset criticized Mister Law saying that when he was back uh as a legislator, he asked for fourteen days and now that he could put up with five days only, how come that you didn't um try to come up with a suggestion of uh fourteen days? So that again shows that the opposition camp members just switched sides all the time. Now, when the secretary was is now in place, he finds that he is in a lot of difficulties in implementing the proposal. He has to abide by certain timetable and procedures to get things done. Madam Deputy, F T U cares very much about paternal leave. You are the real mother of P L. Mister Wong Kwok Hing fought very hard for that. The question lies in how we should implement the policy. We know that, well, the the best option is seven days, of course. But uh if we have three days, well, if you are the parent, you would allow this baby, this premature baby to be born and all you need to do is to try to um give the baby more nutrients. It's not like the opposition camp who said that, well, if it is a premature baby, don't let it out. Don't give birth to it. It's it's just like democracy. If it is not uh mature enough, well, don't pass it. And now we are stuck with our political reform and it is you who are are slowing down Hong Kong's democrat tech democratic development. What have you done? Um Jonathan said that we should pocket it first, but still, we are moving forward. We are not um standing still. Shouldn't you be ashamed of yourself? You are just uh fighting for nothing but standing still. So why uh am I not supporting these C S As? Because the secretary said that if C S As are passed, then the bill will be um withdrawn. Uh we won't want to see things standing still. The secretary and we are attach a lot of importance to the L A B and its consensus. Yesterday and today, the opposition members have not uh actually coordinated among themselves, some say fourteen days, some seven days. Others quoted overseas example pointing to one month or two months. It's very difficult to have consensus within the council, even the opposition camp doesn't achieve some consensus within it uh within the camp. Well, why why are they having this debate here? They just want to show their supporters that they have this tour order, just to show that they are um very concerned about the matter, but they don't, they don't have any regard for the outcome. If you um break up the L A B platform, uh what will we end up with? We want to have sustainable development in Hong Kong for any policy issue, we should take a long-term perspective. We should not be like the opposition camp members. Did they just um um criticize you or turn the table, overturn the table if it is not to their liking? And the they would like to uh bring the L A B down because they are not happy with the L A B's decision. But who is going to to talk to you the next time? Well, if you ha- you have a tens of thousands of votes, does it mean that you can call the shots? Does it mean that you have tens of thousands of votes and then you can grab something from somebody? So don't gamble on labor rights. Don't um try to gain political mileage out of um labor rights issues. Just don't put up a show, just don't try to spark uh controversies and tear the society apart. Thank you, Madam Deputy, so I speak. Does any other member wish to speak? If not, I would like, I call upon the five members of proposed amendments and the secretary to speak again, then the debate will come to a close. Doctor Helena Wong, do you wish to speak again?
Madam Deputy, I would like to thank Sony members taking part in this uh C S A, a debate on C S As for extending the P L leave. First, let me respond to Miss Alice Mack's comments. Well, well, the one who spoke the um most unacceptable comments is Mister Jonathan Ho. Please um try to appeal to your members to strive uh for the for the interest of labor. Don't insult women. And Mister Chen Ham Pan was tried to, would 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 try to cover up for you and he said that he doesn't agree to F T U's members' remarks um using very um unsightly language to insult women. Mister Chen Ham Pan referred to my C S A being conservative. I agree to that. If you have a listen to what I said, among the various C S As today, mine is the 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 most conservative, the modest and the most pragmatic. Well, ask Mister Wong. I am not making a tour order, asking for fourteen days or even one year P L. I'm not asking to overturn the L A B's decision on five-day P L. So I'm very conservative. I have given, I I have made compromise. The D E P has asked for seven days and I have uh taken a step backward so that you can support us. Uh on the one hand, we have to be mindful about the uh L A B's decision, at the same time, we have our own stance. I admit that this is a conservative C S A. Well, if you don't support mine and you support Ted Ho's uh C S A, he his is a more aggressive um C S A, he raised it three years ago. Well, three years ago, we proposed to seven days and you disagreed with that. Back then, if you had the guts to vote on seven days, then we would already have seven days and we don't have to waste our time here today. If you don't support the uh aggressive seven-day P L, I think it's actually within the uh election manifesto of the F T U, same as the D E P. Well, then support my more conservative C S A. Mine C S A is ve- a very pragmatic one. Even if you are in the pro-establishment camp, you can support it, you can side with us. Well, if you side with us, then uh Mister Law has to step aside. Well, he will not be then free to threaten us. F T U mem- uh mem- members, don't treat the D E P members as your enemy. On labor issues, we should join hands and urge the government to implement P L as soon as possible. And then uh on Jonathan Ho, I sympathize with him. Maybe he's under a lot of pressure. He's under tremendous pressure uh from the secretary, the administration. And as a father, well, I believe that he's a father, he's got his own children. He would like very much to have seven P L days as well. But under tremendous pressure, he said something that he shouldn't say. Mister Jonathan Ho said that the F T U would like to pocket it first and then they will continue uh to to fight for more and then they will have something pocketed in the future. I understand his concept or notion about pocketing it first. Well, my amendment is also about pocketing it first. And I'm asking for um something further to be pocketed one year later and we are allowing one year for the government to talk to the employers and employees to thresh out the details for these two extra days. So I'm giving you something, but then you said that I don't want it, I will give it back to you. So I'm puzzled about your thinking. Mister Jonathan Ho, you would like to move C S As yourself, but they that was ruled out by the president. I sympathize with you. The president um said your C S A is not admissible, then I I can cover up for you. Ted Ho's is a is admitted and mine is also admitted. Then you should also continue to to fight for further in interest of the labor rights and I'm giving you the chance to fight together with us. Let's pocket the five days first and then one year after that or um at the expiry of one year of the commencement date, then uh we can have seven days. And in the interim, the L A B can thresh out all the details. So we will have uh one legislative exercise and then we can pocket the benefits in two phases. Well, um my my C S A is a well-intentioned one and we are working together with you to fight for uh or strike for P L. This is a great act that we are engaged in. Mister Felix uh Chong said that uh I'm not uh making a tour order. Well, I believe that he represents uh the business sector or employer sector. He said that he's not concerned about seven days. He said seven days is no big deal, no problem. Just give you the extra two days. That shouldn't be the concern of the employers. So don't believe in Mister Tommy Zheng, he's always exaggerating things. He said it should be uh best if it's just kept at three days. He's overstating the facts. Mister Felix Chong is very clear. He said, no big deal in adding in two dates. He was very honest. He what he was uh most afraid of was there were there are continuous requests because uh if we give you seven days, you will be greedy and then you will still ask for more. And then come the day maybe, we will be like Singapore, we'll have to give fourteen days. And then in Canada, they give one year P L as well, uh be one year P L. Uh the Legco has uh conducted some researches before um Canada, fourteen weeks for M L and thirty-five weeks for the parents for uh an enjoyment by both the dad or the mom. I just talked to my Canadian friend, they said that they altogether they can enjoy one year. That's, well, in uh U K, fifty-two weeks is the case. And they also allow either the mom and dad to to take uh the leave. Now, we are not talking about parental leave, we are not asking for fifty-two weeks or fourteen days. We, what we are asking for is very conservative. The D A B, Chen Ham Ben, you you are very right. I'm so very conservative, I admit it. Well, let's pocket five days first and then one year later, we got get an extra two days. It is so conservative and modest. So pro-establishment camp members, please seriously consider joining hands with me and strive for for what I'm asking for. Don't pitch yourself against me. If the F T U uh really uh is really concerned about P L, don't uh try to play with a sleigh of hands. You said you would like to have seven days of P L and I'm giving not you now the opportunity to support five plus two, one legislative exercise covering two phases of implementation. You get five days in the first phase and then uh what, extra two days one year later. Don't push the proposal back to me. If you are really sincere about or eager about P L, well, try to support me. I think I'm very well-intentioned, I'm very serious in my proposal. Nobody uh likes to have children. Now, if you are so um if you are so great in uh willing to bear responsibility and raise a child, should we, shouldn't we give the dad an extra two days? Well, let's get five days in the first and then uh seven days in the next year. I think that's the most conservative approach. But if the government uh says it, well, even this is not acceptable, does it mean that the government is totally unsympathetic? Carrie Lam, the first female C E in Hong Kong, she said in the policy address that she would work on M L. The um M L would be changed from ten weeks to fourteen weeks and the government is even willing to um fund the that period.
And the the improvement is for four weeks, four more weeks. But now for P L, the government is very insistent on just getting two more days and no more. Uh the government wants to promote family-friendly policies and also to uh promote a parental care. Are you serious? If you are serious, then how come you say that the bill will be withdrawn if uh our C S As are passed? Uh you are putting the F T U on in a very difficult position. And every time we discuss uh P L, whether we have Mister Wong Kwok Hing over their side, the same happens. Would you, would you like to do this again? Well, it it means a lot of trouble to you, uh members of F T U. My proposal is the best to you and the best to promote labor interests. Please support my the C S A. Mister Lung Yiu Chong, would you like to speak again?
Madam Chairman, my proposed amendment is to cha- im- improve the uh P L entitlement from three days.
Im- improve the uh P L entitlement from three days to seven days. Uh undeniably, this is a more aggressive than the amendments moved by. Doctor Helena Wong. Back then, when the government proposed uh three days of P L, uh we already said it should be seven days. So we're just acting in accord in accordance with the uh aspirations we had. Uh we insisted on the same thing so for for a long time. Some members are saying that uh Hong Kong will be severely affected in terms of uh. Uh product uh competitiveness and productivity. If we improve P L to seven days. Well, yes, uh there will be an impact to the business sector, but is it really uh unbearable? Is it really not feasible? I remember when we uh asked for the introduction of minimum wage. We said to the the C E, uh Mister C H Tong. Uh we asked for minimum wage. He said uh it 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 could never be done. It will lead to serious unemployment. And now we have a minimum wage for seven years already. What 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 about our um uh unemployment rate? The unemployment rate is so low, it's actually full employment. So here, the business sector is uh is also claiming that the. The making further improvements will be disastrous. Uh the business sector wants to import labor, claiming manpower shortage. We still remember what they say. They say the economy would not be able to the withstand the impact. And now for so many years have passed. What has really happened? Were actually, they would exaggerate things when we want to improve labor rights. They they paint a. A a much more the a gloomy picture than would be the case. So I would say that uh the the community can really the. Accept this, accommodate this without affecting our competitiveness. Don't use the threatening the language to. To say no to our uh request to improve labor rights. Well, the we we our economy is what it is because of the contribution of our workforce. We cannot uh belittle their contribution. We should show them more respect. Well, they 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 pay a price in promoting uh economic development. We cannot allow the wealth to go to a justus minority of our people. Look at the uh wealth gap. How serious it is. Yeah, we are the worst uh in terms of wealth gap in Asia. And what what has the government done about this? Uh well, it is is it hasn't done anything about it. And now we want to improve P L entitlement by two more days. And we're told that this will affect our competitiveness. Well, are you not really the exaggerating the uh consequences? I hope people for of in the business sector would not do this. They should not just look after their own interests. We should look for social progress. And the government uh is doing the same thing time and again. And that is uh if the discount so passes something uh not in line with the uh. Expectations or wishes, the entire bill will be withdrawn. This is not the first time they have they 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 say this. And other members, instead of criticizing the government for the for the threat. They this they 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 would rather side with the government. And say that if some other members want to amend the bill, then the nothing will be gained. Will get nothing. Look at the government. They know that the that we we have this weakness. That's why they repeat this uh this threat. So that you gi- you give way uh one again and again, you 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 back off. This is a repeat of what happened in the past. And again, we are scared off. Why? It's the it's time that we told the government that we we are we s- we stood together. I don't know. I don't think the government would dare withdrawing the bill. Well, it's a question of whether we 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 are we gave our support to the amendments. We should not connive at such behavior of on the part of the government. Otherwise, this council would be nothing but a rubber stamp. And um what's the meaning of our? Council. Well, members are. Representative of the people, which will reflect public opinion. This government proposal uh is not based on public opinion. It's uh the result of a. Closed-door discussion in the in the L A B. Has the community that been involved in any discussion? It's not fair that they are now trying to threaten us like this. Well, whether you are in favor of uh P L or whatever days, you should not connive at. The government's threatening behavior time and again. Well, I would just stick to one principle. We want the seven days. And therefore, today I want seven days. During the second reading debate, I already said that it is it's just interim goal. Because uh it's true that we would like to get se- fourteen days uh ultimately. We just sell out our long-term aspiration. It doesn't mean that uh we we are uh. Opponents in this matter. One 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 day, when we think that the community can uh accept fourteen days of P L. Uh we would propose it. I don't think there's a lack of consensus here. We know that we cannot reach uh our goal uh in one goal. There's a process. It's just that you you your idea of the process involved is different from mine. So don't say that we don't see things uh in the same way, just because we have raised some long-term. Uh goals. The government shouldn't act like this. The government shouldn't threaten people. So that they will not act in accordance with their own political platform or in accordance with public opinion. So I speak. Doctor Fernando John, would you like to speak again? Uh yes, I'm madam deputy. First. What we're talking about is uh about the C S As. Doctor Helena Wong's uh amendment. Is a conservative compared with um C S As moved by uh miss. Other members, including myself, uh but I will support it. As for the other C S As. Uh pu- we propose to increase uh P L from three days to seven days instead of uh from three days to five days. For this. Matter, we should ask ourselves some questions. Is a five days of P L sufficient? Well, it's better than nothing and is an improvement uh compared with three days. But uh we have to ask this question of sufficiency. Is it enough? Uh look at the uh basic process involved in uh. Having a baby, the mother is in uh is in hospital. For the uh delivery of the ba- baby, some would have a cesarean section. And the baby is born. This is an operation. And the mother would uh have um. A wound which is much more serious uh tha- than uh that of natural birth. If there is a jaundice uh of the baby, the. That the baby would have to be kept in observation in the hospital, the and. And the father. Of course, we have to accompany uh the mother to hospital and. Some would like to witness the birth and then uh he would accompany the wife. Uh who would stay in the hospital for two more days. Some would stay for longer and if a wound. Uh hasn't recovered, the stay would be in hospital would be longer. So it's common to. Stay in hospital for two to three days. So the three days of P L. Uh is of insufficient because all the three days will be spent in hospital. After leaving hos- the hospital, uh then uh. Well, you need to have another two days uh to adjust in at home. And madam deputy, you you certainly know about this process. You need to. Uh adapt to the biological, the clock of a baby. And if it's a if the mother breastfeed the baby, the you don't have much time for sleep. In the first week, uh madam deputy, whether you experience the same. For me, by myself, I have three children. And I all took care of them hands-on. In the first week of their birth. For the whole week, my sleeping time was the same as the ba- baby. When uh the the when when the ba- the baby slept, uh we we my wife and I slept. When uh the babies are walk uh aw- awaken, we we have to be awake. We need to prepare a lot of things. Uh we need to do the household chores. My personal experience is that for the whole week. I mean that for the time I spend at home. I I was always there to take care of uh the baby. And that is uh well, we we ma- just managed to take care of baby, the the two of us. And we have taken care of uh three children. And sometimes uh we we couldn't cope. Uh in Hong Kong, maybe uh uh grandparents can uh help. Most families rely on the uh the parent, the grandparents. Or they may have to hire a helper or hire a maternity helper.
However, these people cannot take the place of the father. We are talking about our social system. Which should allow all fathers. To be released from work. So they have an opportunity. To. Be able to take the baby home. Right after the baby is born, so that there is bonding between the father and the child. And this is also great support for the wife. This will help marital relationship. Three days, of course, is not enough. Five days, seven days is not enough. Well, this is not within this exercise, but conceptually, we think it should be two weeks. The employers will say this is crazy. How can we afford such a long period of leave? And the secretary said that in many places of the world, this is not supported by employers. But by social insurance with contributions from the employees, the employers. And the administration also chips in. Well, that's all right. We support that. We have answered the first question. Five days is not enough. Even seven days is not enough. But we know that at this stage. If we propose two weeks, I'm sure like what the secretary said, this would be surreal. And you can label this surreal as well. Even. The majority of advanced economies have done it and some have done better than two weeks. The second point is affordability. According to the estimates of the administration itself, changing it from three days to five days. Would mean. Uh of course, we are talking about eighty percent pay and the extra cost would be eighty-four. Million dollars and taking up zero point zero one percent of the wage bill. If we want to increase it uh to seven days, that that will jack up the figure to a hundred and sixty-eight. Million or zero point zero two percent. Is that unaffordable? I I can't see why it is unaffordable. If I want fourteen days all at one goal, maybe that's not affordable. And we are not saying it should be the sole responsibility of the employers. If it is seven days for the employer, then the other seven days should be for the government. And calculating it at eighty percent pay, and if we are talking about fourteen days leave. The employers would be shouldering one hundred and sixty-eight million dollars or zero point zero two percent of the wage bill. And the government. Will take up two hundred and ninety-four million or zero point zero four percent of the wage bill. So altogether, zero point zero six percent. If we pay a full pay, then it would add up to zero point zero eight percent. Okay, let us come back to seven days. And we would still go by eighty percent pay. Is that unaffordable? No. The third point is. Would there be any benefit to the economy? Would there be any benefit for employers? And also to society as a whole? I don't want to repeat because in the last round, I cited. Many overseas surveys and findings showing. That increasing P L. And encouraging fathers to claim it um will just be beneficial. The advantages don't just sit with the person who is taking P L. In fact. Businesses are benefited. In California, for example. Paid P L was extended. Well, it is a kind of parental leave. It was extended to six weeks and this was many years ago. And now they are. Giving twelve weeks. But when they extended it to six weeks. At the Center for Economic Policy Research in California, they did a survey with the employers. About productivity. And profitability. And whether there was any impact. At ninety-one percent of businesses. Responded to say there was no impact at all, meaning no negative impact. And the third question is whether there are advantages. There are advantages indeed for every party. And the fourth question is. If P L is extended from three days to seven days, do we have the backing of public opinion? First, is five days sufficient? No. Is it affordable? If we extend it to seven days, yes. And three, whether there are benefits. If we extend it to seven days, yes, and three, whether there are benefits. I already cited a specific overseas survey, showing that there are advantages. And the fourth question is, do we have the backing of public opinion? As other members said, on the twelfth of September this year. The Asian Asia Pacific Research Institute of C U Hong Kong released a survey finding. Fifty four point five percent, meaning more than half of respondents, thought that statutory P L. Said that uh even if it's five days, it will not be enough, and they said there should be more. And if it is five days, they will not object, they said. And of course, uh it is better to have more days. But over half of the respondents actually said that five days is not enough. Is the executive listening to public opinion? Shouldn't members here reflect public opinion? When we say five days is not enough, well, I've given you examples. And we know that there are many advantages, and I know that we have. The affordability. Well, the advantages that I mentioned did not include the economic benefit. And also, if there is backing of public opinion, then we have all the conditions necessary. And we should go by public opinion. So everybody will be happy. As long as the executive is willing to follow public opinion. It's a pity that, as Mister Tommy Jung said, the administration is quite firm. Being firm means it stands on the opposite side of the people. It will not allow even for one more day to be added, and if an amendment is passed today, it will immediately withdraw the bill. That kind of attitude shows disrespect towards this council. You submit a bill, and if that's the attitude you harbor. That would mean that no legislators can propose any amendments. Whether it is a bill or a policy, once you have proposed it, we cannot change any part of it. And if our amendment is passed, you would say there will be no more of it, it will be the end of it. Because you will withdraw the bill, Madam Chair, you are, Madam Deputy. You are part of the establishment, you are part of the executive, in fact, because you are the majority here, and you have members at the Executive Council. You are the majority, whether we talk about functional constituencies or geographical constituencies. What do you want the executive to do? It is very clear that public opinion supports seven days, and you yourself claim that you support seven days. Then say it to the executive, you have all the votes that can influence the stance of the executive. Madam Deputy, here, I therefore really suspect that you have reached an agreement behind closed doors. And in fact, you just want five days instead of seven days, and therefore you are also standing on the opposite side of the people. Mister Gary Fan, would you like to speak again? Madam Deputy, I will speak briefly to respond. To speeches made by different members at third reading. In a normal society. We should understand that in Hong Kong, we have enough public opinion to increase P L. Even more, because we lag far behind many places in terms of labor rights. Unfortunately, we have shouted at the top of our voices, we have presented facts. Reason, figures, and overseas cases and examples. And how Hong Kong has progressed rather slowly in terms of labor rights, we have not been able to. Lobby the administration, when Hurricane Mankut. Attacked Hong Kong, the executive dared not impose a no work order. And Hong Kong workers had such a difficult time rushing back to work. They are of very high quality, but that also goes to show that they do not have bargaining power. The experience is that the executive must exercise public power. In order to intervene. So we have better labor laws to protect the labor force. We are making a very modest request, we are saying we'd like to add two more days to P L. And even if we succeed, we will still lag far behind many other places. But we have not been able to convince the executive. The executive refuses to listen to public opinion. It relies on another power unit. Appointed by the executive itself, and that is the L A B. And it is said that there would not be a safe parameter, and you are resorting to threatening tactics. In the council, you have the cooperation and secret agreement with the pro estab- establishment camp. You are um passing the buck to and fro, and you resort to the King Solomon's analogy. But in this crooked political system in Hong Kong, when we have functional constituencies. Especially with members representing the business sector, you are claiming that this is controversial. Mister Shiu Kafai resorted to the argument of populism. What he means is actually that there is public opinion backing for P L to be. Extended to seven days, but he wanted to argue against it, so he called it populism. Mister Felix Chung, the L P chairman, said, we don't know the difficulties of the business sector. Because we are not in business. Well, what about the gynecologist who delivered your baby? If it was a man, then he would not have given birth to any babies. So we can have empathy, even if we have not done something. When we have objective data and. Examples from overseas, we will still be able to speak on issues so that we can help the operation of this society. The F T U. Lashed out at us when they spoke. And then some of them accused us of not supporting a so-called democratic system. That was proposed. Now, of course, that was a digression. And what they said goes to show how the present system is distorted. This system allows the will of the administration. And also the policies made by the administration to be defended by some here in council. Even if your own surveys showed that half of the respondents supported seven days P L. They would say that, no, this is still controversial, that this is political smearing. And that there are extremities, and then they would be able to shout at us when election comes. So we are legislators, and we do not give proper regard to public opinion. We will be penalized by the electors, uh the next time uh election is held. We have to be politically accountable to our electors. So when it comes to major issues of labor rights. Uh it is our duty as legislators to bring public opinion to bear on the decision of this legislative council. And they criticize us, the other camp. And then they spoke. A lot of un- unconvincing grounds, you could not convince, you're just confused, you try to divert people's attention. You try to smear us, you talk a lot of nonsense, even. If for those who don't support seven P L days, they they admit to the fact that it is not about five days or seven days. And it doesn't cost a lot economically. We, the members who move the C S As have presented uh some figures, made some calculations. And the business sector, the S A R G, and the society as a whole would be able to afford. The seven day P L leave. So how come that the government is not willing to take, make this uh extra step, this is most regrettable. And the pro-establishment camp members. Would put uh are putting up a show together with the government and try to muddle things through. Once again, the Hong Kong people know exactly, are clear about how the council operates. From nineteen ninety seven uh up to now, there have not been any major improvements in the labor legislation. And that's the reason behind it. Why do we fight for democracy? Why do we want to be more accountable as a government? That's the reason. Madam Deputy. I hope that the secretary can. Truly understand the C S As moved by Doctor Elena Wong, Fernando Zhang. Gary, um Ted Hoid and myself. Please consider seriously our amendments. Don't miss out on this very precious opportunity of. Improving the P L in Hong Kong, let's do better. We are the representatives of the public in the council through our speeches, through our votes. Through our uh modest role. In drawing up public policy, we should uh be able to do better. And let's join hands, this is a very humble request, Hong Kong people um know clearly, see clearly. How we conduct our business, we set out all our justifications, and the government should not be stubborn. It should not. Be biased towards the business sector in drawing up labor policies. So I speak, Madam Deputy. Mister Ted Hoid, do you want to speak again? Yes, thank you, uh Madam Deputy. I must respond to some points made by the other members, especially Mister Peter Shu from the Liberal Party. He said that, well, after all, we are just about talking about two days, it's not a problem. I think he's out of touch with reality, two days. Well, if you think of a of a child being born into a family, uh this is a very uh critical period for the family. The critical period for newborns is the first week. The entire family, including the husband and the wife and the family members, should help out during this period. So what can we do in these two days? The husband can get two extra days to accompany the mother. To get a consultation, visit to the um M C H C. And some other family members can get to sleep, well, many of us have raised some children ourselves, according to my observation. Well, how do people take P L days these days? Well, they will take half day, half day. And because usually visits to M C H C are on in the morning, so the husband will get a half day off in the morning. And they go to work in the afternoon. So if we um change it to seven. And Mister Peter Shu that said, what happens in the second week, then you will be um still encountering difficulties, no. Many husbands would say um say take half day leave very often. So that can last them two weeks if they do that. So they can indeed make a good contribution to the family in these two weeks. This period, the mother uh is most emotionally distressed and weak. And two two days means a lot. Well, I think Mister Peter Shu is out of touch with reality, he he said that these two two days don't matter matter that much. Now, F um someone from F T U has said something, and they said that they accept five days. Because they have consulted their sector. Did you notice what they said exactly? They asked the labor sector, say, if we accept five days and then we strive for seventy days, is it good? Do you agree with that? Well, is this a fair type of consultation? Why don't they ask the workers directly if we now strive for seven days? Immediately now, right now, I believe the majority of the workers would opt for seven days. So this kind of consultation, how, I mean, how true is it, or is it a fake consultation? And they said that if you try to uh push through seven days and the government withdraw the bill, this is a non-starter. You are just bang- banging your head against a wall. Well, is it really that impossible? Is it the case that Mister Law said it's impossible, then it's become an impossibility? And then so long as the government says it's is no goal, then you would dare not strive? You are too cowardly to speak up for the workers? Well, aren't you just being a rubber stamp here? Um, we are not even discussing our universal suffrage. As long as the government said something, the uh F the pro-establishment camp members are most ready to bow. To the government's stance, and they said that if we um go against the L A B. And we break down the L A B platform, then well, then the L A B will not discuss things anymore. Well, that's okay, we can have the issues discussed here at the Legislative Council, we have representatives from all sectors. Why don't, why do we need the L the L A B uh to have closed door discussion? If it is so um uh doing things behind closed doors, well, let's disband the L A B. I agree that all the issues should be here, should be discussed here at the council. The F T U uh is a is a pet issue, said that is a pet, the um P L is a pet issue of F F T U. But then people, well, betray their own sons sometimes, and there is this particular scene just now. Uh Mister Peter Shu of Liberal Party. Compliments the D A B and F T U, they said that, he said that they are pragmatic, and they. Uh bear in mind the overall interest of the society and the business sector when they strive for labor rights. I think he is being very honest. The. The bosses here should thank the labor representatives. Well, in fact, they are so friendly, maybe they should hug each other and kiss each other, because the relationship is like that. Well, that's actually what's happening at the L A B. Uh the the so-called representatives of the grassroots workers um are not really representing the labor. Um the election for the L A B, there's no election manifesto. Well, nobody knows how L A B members are elected, uh members of the public haven't heard anything about. Um L A B election. So L A B is maybe is is just a small circle thing, and to be put it even more bluntly. It L A B, it's a uh political. Is a platform where political marriage uh is um there is political marriage between the business sector. And the uh labor sector, which is more friendly towards the business sector. So this is what we are seeing here. Are are you really fighting for labor rights? Of course, they can continue to smear us. Um the members who proposed a seven day P L, they they said they accused us of standing on high moral grounds. If I am really doing that, I would not be proposing seven days, I would be proposing fourteen days instead. So, in fact, within this council. Which members are really um fighting for workers' rights? I must reiterate, I'm not a leftist myself. Like the general members of the public, I would say that the business sector plays a pivotal role in driving Hong Kong's economic development. But ah, as a father myself, as an advocate for uh promoting friendly, friendly policy, I would like to see um uh we taking an extra step in um having uh more P L, increasing it from five to seven days. Can we, uh can our society get more civilized? I think this is something basic. I think this is a very basic demand, and that's on the minds of many people in Hong Kong. I'm not trying to stand in the middle of the struggle or fight between the employers and employees. I just want to speak on behalf of the many families in Hong Kong, the fathers and mothers. We need more leave days. We need more room. And uh when a child is being born in the family and it carries a lot of meaning to us, well, give me two more leave days so that I can say spread over my leave over two weeks and the father can get, can get uh more opportunities to take care of the mother who just gives birth to a child. This is uh just a very modest and humble request, and I appeal to members. Well, please um vote based on your own conscience. And Mr. Law, in your response, can you also tell us how you view family-friendly policies? And also how um the uh, the role of the fam- the, the, the father's role in the family and P L? Or will you be just reciting the script written for you? Well, L, L A B should have all the say, L A B would be your pretext. Well, if you s- serve in the government like that, well, I, I'm afraid that I will not give you my respect, so I speak. The Secretary for Labor and Waver, do you want to speak again?
Madam Deputy, today I have uh sat through the entire meeting from nine up to now, five P M. I've heard all members who have spoken. And uh I would not be caught dozing off by any journalists uh during this whole time. Now, I spoke very little during the uh second reading debate. I've heard over ten hours of debate. If you well, a lot of uh people would uh wrongly think that we are discussing whether we should have P L at all. I don't need to respond that. We do have P L already. And some of the discussion is about whether we uh should have an extra two days of P L. Now, some uh media mis- understood that the case, and they say, they are s- saying that some members are against extending the P L life. Well, I've just received the message that the media have um corrected their reports. And some media reports, uh, well, some members were discussing the seven P L.
So most of the points have been about the extra impact in relation to two additional days. Well, when you talk about giving two more days, I think either you keep on adding to that so that it will be five days, seven days, sev- nine days, et cetera. Well, that takes us back to the topic. Should it be pitched at seven days? I will revisit the idea uh later on. Of course, uh many people have been talking about the statistics, and we've been told about the international comparisons. Uh, well, I used to think that we shouldn't sort of um um wear my head as a professor again trying to give a lecture here and how we should view the international comparisons. So I think I shouldn't um talk about that. As to the final remarks of Mr. Wu Chi Wei, well, of course, he's not in the chamber now. I would urge him to uh listen to what I have said earlier on. I'm afraid he has misunderstood Helena Wong's C S A. After I've listened to Helena Wong's remarks, I know why Wu is misunderstanding Helena. Now, Helena Wong's proposal is that there should be an automatic coming into operation of two additional days on the first anniversary of the passage of the bill. In other words, without the need to get set um the um provision, without going through the Labor Advisory Board, there will be an automatic uh increase. I don't know whether it is uh the fact that um Dr. Wong herself doesn't know how it works or what. Um, I find some criticisms hard to accept, say, for example, those regarding the L A B. Some virtue on insulting the L A B. I really hope that you will be more appreciative. Now, we're talking about public service. They may be representing the employers, or they may be representing the labor sector. For the L A B members to have a discussion, they have to be mutually understanding. And as the representatives, um they have to bear in mind the pressure of the employers that they represent equally. The labor representatives also have to take care of the pressure from the other uh employees. So please, please don't insult the members of the L A B. If you didn't know how the L A B members are elected, please visit the relevant website. I won't dwell on the details. Now, are we going to increase the P L entitlement automatically in a year's time to seven days? Well, it hasn't gone through detailed discussion between employer and employee representatives. There hasn't been any negotiation on the basis of mutual understanding. This is a departure from the approach taken by the L A B that is having a consensus. The administration accepts the consensus of the L A B, and we are not able to accept the CSAs currently before us. Now, for many decades, labor policies and labor legislation have been proposed on the basis of the consensus of the L A B. Therefore, the government has been giving a lot of respect to the L A B's uh consensus. For me to make such a remark, which I have repeated many times, I'm afraid uh usually uh my words have been taken out of context and other things have been um put into my mouth. When there is a consensus from the L A B, then that will become the government's stance. Well, it is also the government's stance to say that certain CSAs are not acceptable. It's not a matter of the L A B prevailing above the legal. Of course, the legal is entitled to moving CSAs different from the government's proposals. The government has got the duty to decide whether the C S A's proposal should be accepted. If it is not acceptable to us, and when we don't have a choice, all we have to do, and all we can do is to withdraw the bill. I think you know that sometimes with some reluctance, uh we may uh agree to letting a particular C S A to be proposed, and we won't withdraw the bill. Sometimes we may even take on board uh a C S A proposed by members. So we've never been um abusing the position. All we are interested in is the extent to which uh we can accept the policy behind the proposals. Now, I have to make it clear that the policy considerations behind the CSAs are not acceptable to us. We encourage everybody to be a good employer, and we are also an employer. And we also and always encourage employers to do better than what is statuteually required of them. I urge you to support the government's proposal so that the male employees can enjoy two additional P L days uh as early as possible. Please vote against the C S A's proposed by Helena Wong and Yu Zhong, Fernando Zhang, Gary Fan and Ted Hui. Thank you. Um, we now vote on the amendment moved by secretary uh moved earlier. Uh, please refer to the appendix to the script in relation to the voting arrangement. Now, I put the question to you, that the amendment moved by the Secretary for Labor and Welfare be passed. Will those in favor please raise their hands? Those against, please raise their hands. Mr. Long Yu Zhong claims a division. The bell will be rung for five minutes. Voting begins. Members, please check your vote. If there are no questions, voting ends and the results are to be displayed. Sixty-five percent, sixty-three four, no one is against it, one abstention. The question has been agreed by majority of the members who are present. I declare the amendment passed. Mr. Ri Li, President, I move that in the event of further divisions being claimed at this meeting in respect of the Employment Amendment Bill, this council shall proceed forthwith to the division after the division bell has been rung for one minute. I now propose the question to you, and that is to the motion moved by, it's thoroughly be passed. For those who are in favor, please raise your hands. Those who are against, please raise their hands. The question has been agreed by majority of the members who are present in the two groups. I order that in the event of further divisions being claimed at this meeting in respect of the Employment Amendment Bill twenty eighteen, this bill, uh this council shall proceed forthwith to the division after the bell has been rung for one minute. Dr. Helena Wong, you may move your first amendment.
Chairman, I move my first amendment to further amend clause three as set out in the appendix to the script. There is in one goal, we are going to pass the legislation so that I, in two stages, will be increasing the uh P L entitlement, first of all to five days and then seven days. I propose the question to you, that is the first amendment moved by Dr. Helena Wong be passed. I now put a question to you as stated. Um, Mr. Ted Hui claims a division, the bell will be rung for one minute.
Voting begins. Please check your votes. If there is no question, voting is closed. The result is displayed. From functional constituencies, thirty-two present, ten-four, eighteen against, no abstention. From geographical constituencies, thirty-three present, sixteen-four, thirteen against, one abstention. The question is not agreed by majority of each of the two groups of members present. I declare the amendment negative. As Dr. Helena Wong's first amendment has been negatived, she may not move her second amendment later on. As Mr. Long Yu Zhong's first amendment is substantially the same as the first amendments of Dr. Fernando Zhang, Mr. Gary Fan and Mr. Ted Hui. Therefore, after voting on Mr. Long Yu Zhong's first amendment, irrespective of whether it is passed or not, Dr. Fernando Zhang, Mr. Gary Fan and Mr. Ted Hui may not move their first amendments. In addition, as the four members consequent upon their first amendments have all proposed their second amendments to amend the long title, if the first amendment of any of these members is not passed, they may not move their second amendments to amend the long title. Mr. Long Yu Zhong, you may now move your first amendment. Chairman, I move my first amendment to further amend clause three as set out in the appendix to the script. I propose a question to you, and that is that the first amendment moved by Mr. Long Yu Zhong be passed. And I put the question to you as stated. Will those in favor please raise your hands? And I put the question to you as stated. Would those in favor, please raise your hands. Mister Alok Hin claims the division. The bell will ring for one minute. Voting begins. Please check your votes. If there is no question, voting is closed. The result is displayed. From functional constituencies, thirty-two present, ten-four, eighteen against. From geographical constituencies, thirty-three present, sixteen-four, thirteen against, one abstention. The question is not agreed by majority of each of the two groups of members present. I declare the amendment negatived. As Mister Lang Yu Zhong's first amendment has been negatived, he may not move his second amendment later on. Doctor Fernando Zheng, Mister Gary Fan and Mister Ted Hui also may not move their first and second amendments. Class three as amended. As the amendment to class three moved by the secretary has been passed earlier, I now put the question to you, and that is that class three as amended stand part of the bill. Would those in favor, please raise your hands. Those against, please raise your hands. I think the question is agreed by majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed. All the proceedings on the Employment Amendment Bill twenty eighteen have been concluded in committee of the whole council. Council now resumes. Secretary for Labor and Welfare. Mister President, I now report to the council that the Employment Amendment Bill twenty eighteen has been passed by committee of the whole council with an amendment. I move the motion that this council adopts the report. And I propose the question to you, and that is that the motion moved by the Secretary for Labor and Welfare be passed in accordance with the rules of procedure. I now put the question to you as stated. Would those in favor, please raise your hands. Those against, please raise your hands. I think the question is agreed by majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed. Third reading, Employment Amendment Bill twenty eighteen. Secretary for Labor and Welfare. Mister President, I move that the-